Good evening and welcome to the final budget hearing and business meeting of the Board of Education, May 6, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is exciting. It's a recognition. Dr. Luft, I'm going to let you start.
Sure. So, we're here this evening to honor one of our own students. Tyler Locke is a student at PNW Bosse's and was selected as a student of distinction. So, without further ado, I'm going to invite up Assistant Superintendent Dr. Greg Brown. He's going to invite up some of his colleagues. And I do want to note that Tyler is joined by his parents here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Luft, and good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Brown. I am the Assistant Superintendent at the Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's, and I just wanted to extend a thank you to all of you, to the Board, to Dr. Luft, to the administration, to the community members that are here, and to the families that are watching at home for partnering with us and being just strong advocates of Bosse's and the programming that we're able to accomplish and do together. For more than 40 years, the Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's mission has been simple: service and innovation through partnership. And we can only do that by partnering with you. So, again, thank you for that. It's my honor now to introduce the Career Academy Principal, Mr. Gutierrez, who's going to say a few words about Tyler, and then I think we're... Sarge, are you also good? Okay, Sarge is here also. He's going to share a little bit, so you're in for a treat. But thanks for having us. We appreciate the partnership.
Thanks very much. Good evening, Dr. Luft, Board of Ed. Thank you so much for having us here this evening as guests as we celebrate one of your students, and thank you for sharing him with us. We have roughly 1,400 students on our campus, and to just give you a magnitude of this honor tonight, there's only nine students picked in the course of a year to receive this award, and the student we're honoring tonight will be that ninth student. So, without further ado, I'm going to read the words that his teacher, my colleague, Mr. Thomas Houlihan, wrote about Tyler in recommending him for this unique honor. Tyler Locke's dedication to the law enforcement program at PNW Bosse's has been second to none, according to his teacher, Tom Houlihan. Tyler displays maturity and focus beyond his years and has excelled in every facet of the program. His stellar academics and outstanding ability with hands-on components of the program, such as handcuffing techniques, fingerprinting, baton training, active shooter response, and traffic stops, make him an outstanding candidate going forward to the police academy of his choosing. A quiet leader with a great sense of humor, Tyler has also participated in various volunteer efforts offered in the law enforcement class, such as feeding the homeless on Thanksgiving Eve at Hastingson Hudson High School, and helping with security and traffic flow at the union event at the PNW Bosse's campus in early April. Tyler also lends his voice each morning... This is where I know you. He's the voice. There's no doubt about that. Each morning during the morning announcements and the Pledge of Allegiance. Tyler never fails to seek me out and shake my hand after class to say, "Thank you, Mr. Houlihan." Tyler enrolled at the Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's Law Enforcement Program with the goal of obtaining vital information to help him pursue a career as a police officer, and has taken advantage of every opportunity at the tech center to guide him into a successful career in law enforcement. The sky is the limit for this young man. I'm going to take a moment right now and hand over the mic to his instructor and a close colleague and friend of mine, Mr. Thomas Houlihan. Tom?
Thank you, sir. Hi, everybody. I would never be able to remember all that from the heart. That's why I had to write it down, but I'll give a little bit from the heart. This young man makes it easy for me. Teaching, in a lot of ways, is harder than being a police officer, and he makes it very easy for me. I want to thank Putnam Valley for sending me your best, and I want to thank his parents for raising such a wonderful human being. I was a sergeant in the police department, and that's not an easy job either to motivate police officers. He's going to be a sergeant's dream. You know, you're going to ask him to do something, and yes, sir, and I'm going to do it, and then the future is up to him. I see him as a future supervisor, and like I said before, the sky's the limit. I'm just so proud of him, and he makes teaching worth it. And again, I thank you guys for sending him to Bosse's. Thank you very much. Come on up, buddy. I've got something for you. Kind of distinction. I've got a fancy medal here for you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for making us look like that. This guy right here. Congratulations.
Tyler, Tyler, could you stand by the mic? I have some questions for you.
Oh, yeah.
What are your plans after, you know, moving on from tech and your studies here at Putnam Valley?
Okay, so after I graduate, I'm looking to go to Westchester for two years, and then after that, apply for as many police academies as I can, and preferably be a New York State Trooper, but, you know, like Sarge said, the sky's the limit.
I wanted to tell you, young people like you give us great pride, and I mean that from the heart. I love the Bosse's technical program. I always have. I've been a big supporter of it, and your success in that program speaks volumes for what the program does, but also for you as an individual. Your perseverance, your focus, you are going to reach the sky as the limit, without a doubt. And God bless you, man. I'm so proud of you. I mean that.
Thank you, Mr. Alvario. I mean, I'm still on. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Do you want to come down and shake your hands?
Congratulations.
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 Tyler, congratulations, buddy.
I mean that. Thanks so much.
Congratulations.
If we knew you did the pledge, we would have had you lead ours.
Now, we're going to work on the smooth transition from the student of distinction to the final budget hearing.
I'd like to invite you, if you would like to leave or need to leave, this is before we start the budget presentation. We'd love to have you stay, but we understand...
Yeah, again, Tyler, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
I love that program. I mean that. It's so good for our kids.
Okay, so this is our 2526 final budget hearing.
Yes, so this process obviously started many, many months ago. I do want to really give a ton of credit to Dr. Grace Chan for the amount of work that she put into this. I know it's a Herculean effort to take a budget that you did not build, understand it, dissect it, transform it, transition it, do all those things you have to do to put it into a format that you are familiar with, that you believe the community will understand and provide the greatest amount of clarity and transparency possible. And I think Grace and her team have really been able to do that. She also has a new district treasurer, Matthew, who is extremely helpful throughout this process, and I do want to recognize their efforts and the efforts of the entire department for being able to put together such a well-polished budget, as well as presentations throughout the winter. We did some new forms that we use for our building administrators and our department chairs, and I believe that made this for an easier process transition, as well as the budget document, which is posted online as well. So, this concludes our presentations and our Q and A. We've held numerous Q and A sessions, some ourselves, listening hours, some in partnership with the PTA and the Education Foundation, and I really believe that what we are providing to the voters is a balanced budget that represents both the needs of the district, as well as the financial burden that those needs place on our taxpayers.
Any questions, comments, anyone? Anything else to add?
Nope.
The next order of business is we're going to have to identify a chairperson for the vote.
Right.
So, that's coming up, so we need to fill in the...
Can't do it. Jeanette can't do it.
That's true. I'm happy to do it. I can do both ends.
I'm going to vote for Haley.
I can do the morning.
What?
I'm going to go in my pajamas, but I can do the morning.
You want to do the opening?
Sure.
Okay.
Starts at 6:00. You have to be there 5:30 to open the vote.
5:30? You said 5:40? No.
I'm only teasing this cron. I'm not really asking...
Oh, you're teasing me.
You get there five minutes before 6:00, you're good.
Okay, so you're going to open? And I'll close.
Wonderful.
That's good.
I think I'm traumatized from the last one.
Somebody texted. Does anybody know?
Oh, that's great.
You know, before we move on, Haley or Aiden, did you have any concerns, questions that you've been hearing about the budget, or any comments about the budget before we move on?
Not really.
You don't have to pay taxes, so you can ask the questions. No?
None of the students really have any questions or concerns about the budget. No one's really...
So, are you 18 and able to vote?
I am, yeah.
Good for you.
Okay. I think it needs to be said that the work that the team at the district level has done to provide information as it has been requested has been tremendous. It obviously goes without saying that it's a part of the job to do that, but I think that it just needs to be recognized, the amount of work and thoroughness that are in the responses to any public citizen that asks a question about our budget. Thank you for your professionalism, Dr. Luft, Dr. Chan, Ms. Levine, when you chime in when you need to. Natalie, thank you guys so much for all of the work that you've done to really just make sure that people get the answers to the questions they have, and for also listening to the community with respect to, you know, the type of community communication we have, with respect to our process. I think we've grown a lot this year. I certainly have learned quite a lot this year, and I really want to thank the work of the facilities team that continues to come out at every meeting, those people who are just faithful to the work. Thank you so, so much for getting the right information out there, for getting factual information out there, for pointing people to the district when needed, and to really being a thoughtful partner in the process of, you know, delineating this project. So, thank you to all.
And just to confirm again, all the budget information's on the website, pvcsd.org, under budgets, all of our past videos, all of the information, the mailings, everything that you want to know about anything about the budget, it's on the website.
And we do have some new videos as well, right, Dr. Luft?
Yep. So, I was going to say, everyone should have by now received two separate documents mailed to your house, the most recent one with more detailed information. The district, I think today finalized our budget newsletter, which is a much more detailed mailing, so that'll be going out in the near future, and everyone will receive that prior to the budget vote. The state requires that arrive within a certain time period of the budget, so we can't send that too soon. And that will be our third and final publication related to the budget. There is another one coming out regarding pre-K, if that hasn't already gone up. So, there is a forthcoming, but not necessarily related to the budget. And I encourage everyone to go out and vote, and let their voices be heard. This is probably the most meaningful thing, the most meaningful thing, that community members in Putnam Valley have a say in, and it's important that they exercise that right.
May 20th, Tuesday, May 20th, two weeks from tonight, 6:00 a.m., 9:00 p.m., Putnam Valley Elementary School.
Yes, and bring your kids to vote if they go to Putnam Valley Elementary School, because we will be voting on ice pops or ice cream sandwiches for Field Day.
They're going to have the bubble bus?
Very important vote. I don't know about the bubble bus this year, Sam. That's not on the ballot, but ice pops and ice cream certainly are the choices right now, so we shall see who wins. That year was interesting.
It was. They got everything this year.
That's not happening this year. An anomaly.
All right.
Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comment on any of the agenda items. Not seeing anybody wanting to speak. I'm going to move to the consent agenda.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve Consent Agenda Items 2 through 7 as listed below.
Second.
Mrs. Bellino, you got your voice back?
I do. Approving minutes of the previous meeting, approving the unamended substitute listing for the rest of the school year, CSE, CPSE placements, three agreements, one of which is with Northeast Rentals, which is the rental of the graduation bleachers, a team merger amended agreement for girls' swimming, it results in a savings to the district, and an agreement with Pace University to provide Pace Student Field Opportunities for their students next year, which includes student teaching, approval of some additional and/or unpaid hours for staff members, and appointing the workers and the chairpersons for the May 20th, 2025 vote.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extentions? The resolutions pass. Presentations. We have the first reading of Policy 8113, Extreme Heat Condition Days.
So, this is a state-required policy, which is really the only reason why it's before the board as a first reading right now. I do want to point out that Putnam Valley is one of the very few districts with the luxury of having central air conditioning in our entire middle school and high school, as well as air conditioning throughout our elementary school. So, this policy speaks to preventative measures, responses in the event that a classroom were to exceed the temperatures outlined by the state, 82 degrees and 88 degrees, but we have really no expectation that we will ever have to face these conditions, given the infrastructure that we have in place here in Putnam Valley.
Do we need to have two readings? Can we waive the first reading and do the second reading?
We discussed it. There's no rush to get it done, so it's not like it... At least, the first reading provides the opportunity for the community if somebody had some input or comments or whatever. So, our plan is just to bring it up again the next meeting for a second reading and get it done with them, but at least this provides anyone who may have some comments or feedback on this policy an opportunity to provide it to the Board before we adopt it.
Okay. Okay, reports, students.
So, the Science Research Symposium was last week as a practice night for the sophomores because they have a competition coming up, and was a way for all the upperclassmen to present their research and their findings. The National Honor Society held their induction ceremony, inducting over 30 new members. The high school musical Legally Blonde was a huge success with record ticket sales since COVID, and was a huge turnout for all three nights. The PVCSD community potluck was a great way for those in the community to gather together, and that also took place on the same day as Legally Blonde. Girls in Sports Day also had a great turnout and involved high schoolers mentoring young girls and showing them some of the sports that were offered here. IB exams have started for the seniors and are just about halfway done, and they will be wrapping up next week and a few days following. And May 1st was Decision Day, so lots of seniors wore college merch to represent the schools that they will be attending.
I couldn't move off your report without saying congratulations to you and the play. It was amazing. The play was amazing, the whole thing, the cast, the entire cast, but you were exceptional. So, congratulations, and we're glad you're here because the play is over, and now you have a little bit of a life back.
Thank you so much.
You truly were phenomenal. I mean that. I was commenting to Haley before that, her ability to keep her breath and say the lines and sing while she's jumping around like a genius was just amazing. I'm sitting there getting exhausted watching her, and she's just bouncing, and it was phenomenal. Really an amazing, amazing performance.
Thank you.
And along with that, the jump rope first.
Yeah.
That was quite impressive.
Yeah.
That show was not of a high school caliber.
No, much higher, much higher, yeah.
From everyone who was center stage to backstage, to lighting, to costumes, I got to take a little tour of backstage and all of the amazing things happening and the commotion, and just to see that many students working together towards a common goal that was a product of excellence was so amazing. And you, my dear, you are very gifted, so I wish you the best in your future endeavors, and I was happy to see at the National Honor Society that you are doing a double major in theater and...
Speech pathology.
Speech pathology. So, you keep following your passion, my dear, because you've got good stuff inside of you. Great job.
Thank you.
Along with that, Bosse, you're going to Buffalo?
Yeah.
Have your winter coats ready? Snow boots?
It gets cold.
It does.
Congratulations on that.
Yes, absolutely.
Unlike Putnam Valley, it still snows up there. So, if you like the snow, it's a good place.
So, I was going to say ditto on mine, many of the same things. I did want to acknowledge again, I thought the show was fantastic. I don't know who makes these metro decisions for the awards, but I'm going to be really annoyed if we don't win a lot of them. Just the crowd reaction at the end of each scene and like the roar that came out of the crowd and the cheers, and to Sam's point, I was exhausted watching you guys. How you were able to sing and dance like that at the same time was pretty amazing.
Not lose your breath.
I mean, your application dance scene there at the Harvard was like, I think it went on for a half hour. I was calling a water break for you guys, but it was really an impressive show, and I give you guys all the credit in the world for being able to pull it off, and I really hope your efforts are recognized when it comes time for those awards.
Absolutely.
This week, we sent a message out, oh, I sent a message out on behalf of Teacher Staff Appreciation Week this week, just really recognizing the exceptional efforts of our faculty and staff. We're lucky to be surrounded by such amazing professionals. It's the number one piece of feedback we receive from our students who go off to college and come back, and they are gracious and thankful for the experience that they had, the love, the caring, the knowledge they gained from the teachers we have here and the staff members we have here in Putnam Valley. So, it's truly a place where everyone's willing to do whatever is necessary to support our students, and I think those efforts are recognized by our alumni when they come back. So, I do want to extend my appreciation along with the message to everyone who makes this place as special as it is. Also, I wanted to note the community potluck. I thank all the parents and community members who came out. We actually had a few families from Garrison who came, both current and incoming students. They came here for dinner, then they stayed for the show, and it was really an impressive scene. So, thank you for everyone who made that possible. The district safety team had another training with Alteris. So, it was our district-wide safety committee, and we reviewed our district safety plan, as well as coordination between the district and buildings in the case of an emergency. Girls in Sports Day is always one of my favorite days of the entire year. We have our high school athletes, female athletes, working with very young kindergarten students, and sometimes teaching them different sports, the importance of teamwork, all the some of the basic skills they get, and I think is always a huge success. So, again, thank you for everyone who made that possible, both the parents, as well as our students who teach those, our youngest students. As we had shared, the Putnam Valley will be offering universal pre-K for the first time, so the lottery application window is open now. It'll be open through May 30th. I think last I checked today, we were up over 60 applicants. So, we anticipate a minimum number of 32 seats. That number could rise as high as 40 total seats, depending upon certification and licensing for our particular space. So, it still maintains an eight-to-one ratio, so if we went above 32, the Y would simply provide an extra professional to cover those classrooms, but if we stay at 32, then it would just be a teacher and a teaching assistant in each of the classrooms, as well as an onsite supervisor. So, stay tuned for more information on that. Our drawing will be livestreamed, it'll be held in June, beginning of June, and for those selected, they have until June 30th to complete the registration deadline. You must be a resident of the Putnam Valley School District. If you live in the town of Putnam Valley, but within other and other district school boundaries, you would not qualify, so you have to reside within the Putnam Valley School District boundaries. And the program's scheduled to begin in September 2025. It'll be housed in the modular building behind the elementary school, and it'll be open to students who are four years old by December 1st, 2025, and reside within the Putnam Valley School District. We did get a couple of questions, and I was surprised looking at the application today. We have numerous sets of twins, but unfortunately, it's a true lottery, so there is a potential where one child is selected and the other is not.
That'd be tough.
We have no authority, because we're pulling numbers. I don't even know what names those numbers are attached to, so until we connect those numbers to names, we won't know whether both siblings got in or not. So, I know someone had reached out and answered the question. We just have, we carry no jurisdiction. It's not our rules, it's the state's lottery rules.
Can we add that information to like future flyers that we send out about this program? Because that's like a pretty important factor.
Sure. I thought it was about just reaching out to, now we have contact information for those who applied, so just to make them... They'll always have the decision whether or not they still want to, if one's selected, to send the one and split them up, or to not send either, and hopefully, if they're both selected, then it's not an issue, but we'll make sure that we make contact with each of those families, since we know who they are, just to make them aware of that situation.
Question, if they are registered for the pre-K program, do they need to re-register for kindergarten the following year?
There'll be some sense of re-registration, because there's actually different vaccinations that are required for incoming kindergartners, and there are for pre-K students, but they won't have to redo their residency registration work. So, they'll still come in, they'll still go through the pre-K screening process, they'll have to provide updated immunizations, but it'll be a simplified registration version compared to what they undergo now.
Okay, very good.
I have a question.
Yes.
If somebody gets chosen a twin, and only one of the people choose it, and then they elect not to go, are we pulling enough numbers to have a waitlist?
Yep. So, we'll know exactly how many seats we have, or hopefully, we'll know how many seats we have before that date, but we're going to pull an extensive waitlist anyway, because people could sign up and then not register, they can decide not to split up twins, we could find out that the space holds more than we anticipated. So, we're going to guarantee 32 seats, and then we're going to pull a waitlist that covers at least the additional possibility of eight, as well as a true waitlist for anyone who doesn't complete the registration process.
And the eight is because of spatial concerns, not because of faculty concerns?
Yeah, they have their own licensing through the OCFS, so they have to come into the space. Each student needs a certain amount of square footage for that space. There's like a ratio for a number of students, and sinks, and toilets, and things like that, so all of that goes into the licensing, so that'll be determined by them.
Have they secured their license already?
They're in the process of doing it now, yeah. We have to give them fire inspection information, evacuation information, lots of information that the district holds. They have to have part of their licensing review.
So, if there's a fire drill in the elementary school, they would follow along with that?
They follow everything we do, yes. So, if we do lockdown, they do a lockdown. We do a fire drill, they do a fire drill. They're on the same system. If the fire alarm in the elementary school goes off, it goes off in the modular building. Everything's connected.
Okay.
If we make an announcement, it's part of our procedure now. If we have a lockdown, that building is cleared, and that will continue, that will remain.
Wonderful.
All right. So, I had mentioned earlier that there was vote information sessions regarding the budget and the bond, and I wanted to thank the PTA, the Education Foundation, and note that those were made for faculty and staff meetings as well, to make sure our own staff is informed. I was able to attend the National Honor Society induction, where over 30 members were recognized. First of all, we have a ton of people going to school for engineering, specifically aerospace engineering is like a new thing.
So amazing, and pre-med.
I think there's like four or five...
Yeah, medical. The medical was huge.
Going for aerospace engineering, which I thought was... But I do want to point out, for the first time in recent memory, there was several students that are going to school for education.
Yes, there were.
Four.
And I remember years where there was zero.
I kept...
And it was too elementary and too secondary.
That's right.
So, as a public... Yeah, they have their own licensing through the OCFS, so they have to come into the space. Each student needs a certain amount of square footage for that space. There's like a ratio for a number of students and sinks and toilets and things like that. So all of that goes into the licensing. So that'll be determined by them.
Have they secured their license already?
They're in the process of doing it now, yeah. We have to give them fire inspection information, evacuation information, lots of information that the district holds. They have to have part of their licensing review.
So if there's a fire drill in the elementary school, it would, they would follow along with that?
They follow everything we do, yes. So if we do lockdown, they do a lockdown. We do a fire drill, they do a fire drill. It's, they're on the same system. If the fire alarm in the elementary school goes off, it goes off in the modular building. Everything's connected. If we make an announcement, it's part of our procedure now. If we have a lockdown, that building is cleared. And that, that will continue. That will remain.
Wonderful.
All right. So I had mentioned earlier that there was vote information sessions regarding the budget and the bond, and I wanted to thank the PTA, the Education Foundation, and note that those were made for faculty and staff meetings as well, to make sure our own staff is informed. I was able to attend the National Honor Society induction where over 30 members were recognized. First of all, we have a ton of people going to school for engineering, specifically aerospace engineering is like a new thing.
So amazing. And pre-med.
I think there's like four or five
Yeah, medical, the medical was huge.
Going for aerospace engineering, which I thought was, but I do want to point out, for the first time in recent memory, there was several students that are going to school for education.
Yes, there were.
Four.
And I remember years where there was zero.
I kept
And it was two elementary and two secondary.
That's right.
So as a public educator, it made me smile to hear that some of our most talented and brightest students are considering pursuing a career in education.
Not as many SUNY schools chosen on that. That always surprises me because that's the biggest bargain that anybody could have in education. There, you know, you have four university centers and then the colleges themselves. They offer a great education.
So Science Research Symposium, I always say, if you ever want to be humbled and feel very not smart, I encourage you to go to that. So it started off with their own potluck, which was very well attended. Then the sophomores presented, the sophomores and juniors presented their posters upstairs. And then we went to the pack, we had a keynote speaker, Ms. Ross's daughter, Sarah Ross, was the keynote speaker. And then we heard from some of our seniors. They do their toast for the underclassmen, sort of toast their seniors. And it's always a fantastic event. And you're guaranteed to learn something new when you hear these kids talk. I do want to note there is on the agenda this evening is a recommended calendar change. So I asked the board to consider closure of school on Friday, May 23rd, as is noted in our union contracts, that it would be the first giveback day if we had two or less school closures. While by the letter of the law, we did have two. One was the very unfortunate police event transpiring in our town. And I don't believe that was the intent of that language when it was written. It was written for snowstorms, power outages, floods, rains, winds, not for man hunts. So I would, that's coming up later in the agenda. I do want to note, the elementary school currently has a half day scheduled for that Friday. And if the board approves the Friday closure, that half day will shift forward one day to Thursday. And that's a giveback day, contractual giveback day related to parent-teacher conferences. Also, I wanted to, just again, remind the board, I had started a conversation a few meetings ago regarding the possibility of having employees offered a 50% discount of the non-resident tuition rate. So I'm working with our attorneys to draft language. I'll share that language with our union leaders, if it's something they're interested in. But I did want to just sort of bring that back on the radar, that that's something that I will be recommending hopefully at some point this year. It's not free. It's really following the same model as our Garrison students. It's really a revenue generator for our school district and a savings for our taxpayers. If a couple employees bring their kids in, we're not hiring new teachers, we're not building new classrooms, we're not providing transportation. Their home district's responsible, responsible for their special education costs. So really, it's a win-win for them as it is for us and, and is for our taxpayers as well. So any revenue we generate through that would ultimately save our taxpayers money in the end. So I just wanted to bring that up again. As well as for the excitement of the policy committee members, today in our administrative team meeting, we completed our review of the Code of Conduct for those who have been paying attention to the policy work. This is our final piece of our policy manual, the needed review. It's the most detailed and intricate portion. The Code of Conduct has already been presented at each building steering committee. So that was an opportunity for teacher, administrator, parent feedback. So that feedback was then collated into one document. We reviewed that document as an administrative team. The next step will be before our policy committee. And then we look to schedule a public hearing where the community has an opportunity to provide input on those proposed changes for the Code of Conduct. So for you guys, you should get a notice in the near future and a very complicated-looking document shared with you. There's lots of comments. It'll make more sense when we go through it together, but I want to give you guys a chance to review it first.
Be good.
So you get a sense as to what it is. And our, our ongoing reminder that there's a vote on Tuesday, May 20th, at the elementary school from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Come out and let your voices be heard. Some upcoming events, we have on Monday, May 19th at 9:00 AM, the elementary school has their read aloud, which is always an awesome event. And then we'll really start entering concert season. Wednesday, May 21st is our high school chorus concert. Wednesday, May 28th is our high school band concert. And by then, we will have had another meeting. So I'll keep going down the list another time. Thank you.
It's an exciting time of year. Okay.
Busy time.
Busy too. New business. Action items number one, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Joanna Jackson to a probationary appointment as a senior county clerk on step three of the CSCEA salary schedule effective May 25th, 2025. Ms. Jackson will immediately begin an unpaid leave of absence effective May 25th, 2025 through June 30th, 2025. Ms. Jackson will begin her 52-week probationary period from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Liliana Costanzo to a four-year probationary term as an ENL teacher commencing September 1st, 2025, and terminating on August 31st, 2029, in the tenure area of ESOL at the middle school on step one MA of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Costanzo's ESOL, English to Speakers of Other Languages, K through 12 certification is pending.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved to approve the WPSBA Westchester Putnam School Boards Association 2025-26 nominating committee's slate of officers, directors, members of the Board of Directors and the 2025-26 proposed budget, and authorize the Board of Education President to sign the WPSBA annual meeting ballot as per doc. number 180/25 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? I'm sorry to be leaving the WestPutt Board, but you can only serve two terms.
Thank you for your service.
I will still go to all of their things and remain involved. Westchester Putnam School Boards Association has been a great resource. Teacher leaders, board member, support teams, just really, all in all, they're a great organization. And I'm happy to sign the ballot and the budget. So. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
I just want to, hold on. I just want to echo what Sasha said. Thank you for your time there. It was much appreciated. Barbara does a lot of behind-the-scenes work with Westchester Putnam Voces, and we appreciate that, Barbara. Thank you.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the first reading of policy number 8113, Extreme Heat Condition Days, as per document number 184-25, and that's attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Dr. Luft, if, I know it's not a problem for us, but for schools where it is, if they have to send kids home, is it considered like a snow day, but the opposite?
Yeah, so there's, it's not an automatic send anyone home. That's actually not even what the policy reads. It's supposed, you're supposed to take, try to remedy the situation. So
Turn the lights off.
Right, so turn the lights off, turn off electronics that don't need to be used, put a fan in, open a door, other ways you could do to help sort of mitigate the heat issues. If it's 88 degrees in the classroom, they have to find an alternative space or where practical or as practical. I don't know if people have alternative spaces. But if they are sent home, then it would count, it wouldn't count as instruction hours, just like anything else would. So it certainly would count against them.
It's gotta be tough to have to hold those snow days till the last day of
Yeah.
I can't imagine how that works. Anyway.
It does happen in Dutchess.
It does happen?
Yeah, last year it happened. I work in Wambers Falls, and it happened in Dutchess or Orange. Somebody from, one of my coworkers, it happened too.
There are very, very few districts that have
Totally.
Full air conditioning.
Full air conditioning.
That's true.
Most have classroom air conditioning. It's just gymnasiums, cafeterias. I'm pretty sure that my cafeteria on graduation day last year was 105 degrees. And we made it.
By turning off the lights?
I'm just, fans didn't even work.
It's dead air.
You know, this is an interesting piece of legislation here because I don't know how that's gonna really pan out and affect families because it's unpredictable.
Right.
And the truth is, if students were needing to be sent home, some students are still gonna remain in school till 3 o'clock.
And how many are going home to homes without air conditioning?
Yeah.
Right.
In some cases, homes that may be hotter than the school is. Definitely in many ways defies logic. And I can, speaking with my colleagues, there's districts spending millions of dollars of taxpayer money to now meet this unfunded mandate by the state. So it's, it's a good day to be in the valley. Not have to worry about it.
The history of summer vacation is actually that it was too hot to be in school during summer. But, you know, things are changing now.
Okay, number five?
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to amend the 2024-25 school district calendar as per document 187/25 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? So again, we're gonna have, they're gonna be off what day, Dr. Luft?
It'll be Friday, May 23rd.
So before Memorial Day week?
The Friday before Memorial Day. It's on the calendar, as school calendar notes. This is the first giveback day.
Okay.
And the elementary school will have a half day that Thursday.
And that'll be like super clearly communicated to families?
We were just waiting for this meeting. Now obviously having communication as well as the buildings.
Wonderful.
Okay. All right. I'd like to open it up to the public for comment. Any public comments? No? Okay, upcoming meeting topics?
So our next meeting is scheduled
May 20th?
Yep, May
No, that's the vote.
That's the vote.
22nd.
May 22nd.
So May 22nd is the next business meeting, and I believe we're going to do a presentation on our writing curriculum continuum. I'm lying. Oh, it's June, not May? Oh, sorry, June.
That's Voces. May's Voces.
May 22nd, the, oh, the Voces presentation, the CTE presentation. Gotcha. And then the 12th is what's gonna be the writing continuum and key 12 work that's been going on.
That's wonderful.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay, board member comments?
Very quickly, just want to, the staff appreciation, and I know, Dr. Luft, you did send out a wonderful letter congratulating all the, the hard work that our, our employees put in to the district. But it's, it's felt not only by our, our students, our children, but by the community itself. And it's greatly appreciated. I also want to recognize, because it's Nurse Recognition Day tomorrow, all the, the school nurses that are employed in the district who provide such great care for our kids, health, and also in many cases emotionally, especially the younger students. So they've done a fine job as well, and they're, they're much appreciated.
To that point, I, I wrote a note to the staff. I'm gonna read it tonight and change it if you want me to add or subtract anything. For the two people that are listening online, I don't think I'll be like, this is not a spoiler alert, but I will send this out to, to the entire staff. I wrote, "The Board of Education wants you to know that each and every one of you is an important piece of the fabric of caring with which we surround our students. Each of you has something or many things that add color, filling, and warmth to the quilt. Without you, there's a hole, and the quilt is less effective. It is impossible to convey how important we see each of you and your role in the district. Thank you for your work, your dedication, and your presence every day. We wouldn't be Putnam Valley strong without you."
Amen.
Beautifully said.
That was good. Well said. Well said.
All right, I'll give it to, I'll send it to Maury. You can send it out to us.
Thank you.
Okay. I also wanted to talk about a couple of things. First of all, students, while you're here, I attended a training session on, done by WestPutt, on putting students on, on their board, on, because that's now gonna be the rule. So a lot of school districts are scrambling to try to figure out how to do that. So I just want to ask, like, is there, is there anything we could have done better or anything that would have made your time on the board more effective or better so that we can make those improvements going forward? Every year, we try to, you know, make improvement so that your participation in the, with the board stuff is better. So what could we do to make it better?
Overall, I think it was, it was very well. The only thing I would say is like the transition for like, you know, next year's board representative, just a little, little more guidance, because we were told like, yeah, you're gonna go be on the Board of Education.
I agree.
Go. And, okay. So, I don't know, just maybe a little more transition, but besides, yeah. But besides that, I feel there really wasn't, wasn't much missing.
Okay. I know for us, we were selected because we were in the student government for like the whole school. So I think that was a good way for us to like keep moving forward in that, like, club. And like, we were typically used to that type of thing. So I definitely think getting juniors who are either in that student government or know who they are ahead of time is very helpful, just in case they weren't in that type of setting, so that they know what to expect.
So when, help me back, go back. When were you told or asked or?
September, right?
Well, and told.
We were asked earlier.
It was around this time last year.
Around this time last year.
Yeah.
Yes. And our third member was actually, they didn't want to pick anybody until they figured out who our class president was the next year. So that was like a personal class advisor choice that I think kind of made it difficult because we didn't really know what was happening. But I think that all three should definitely be picked ahead of time.
Yeah, they, they should be picked prior to the end of the school year, I believe, and, and at least meet with us over the summer, you know?
Well, and that was another question people talked about at this, at this course, like, when we have our July 1st meeting, our reorganization meeting, do you come so that you can hear how we select our president and how, and how we decide what's gonna happen? You know, Dr. Luft pointed out that that's like another thing. Like, we don't want to discourage students from doing it by inviting them to things. Some of the districts have invited their students for the, the board retreat so that they can see how we, how you work together. You know, how, what are, what is gonna be our focus for the year? Help us set goals. But again, that's, I, I don't want to put too much on, on students that are, this is their senior year, they've got a lot of stuff going on. So I'm trying to balance their importance on the board with their, their need to breathe every now and again, and not do something. So, you know, I'm, I'm trying to work that out in my head.
But I, I, I believe that prior to the start of the next school year, we should have a pretty good idea of at least who the candidates might be for the board positions.
But Aiden's point of, of more guidance, like preparing a handbook, like, so that this is what, this is what we see as your role, these are, this is how important you are to our work, you know?
I think, I think they should watch a video.
Or
Like a video of, of tonight is perfect because it's not too long. And they get to see, like, I'm just being honest, like, no, no high school's gonna sit there for three hours and watch a meeting. But, you know, right, guys?
Ooh.
Right?
White hair.
But just to see the interaction or maybe even visit a meeting.
That's what I was gonna say. Why not invite the, the potential candidates to come to a board meeting? And we can interact with them while they're here and say, what questions do you have? Do you, do you see how it operates? And, you know, go through the agenda.
Is there any chance for you all, you, to meet with them, to kind of tell them, okay, so here's, I know you've met with Dr. Luft, now you've met with the board, but here's the real
We set that up last year. We met with Reese, right?
Yeah.
Was it, both you were there or just?
I think I was the only one there.
You were there. So Haley was, so we, we set it up last year. We, so Aiden and Haley were both selected in the spring of last year. We set up an opportunity for them to meet with the current board reps so they can talk sort of student to student, get a sense as to what it was. Obviously, at that time of year, schedules are crazy, it's really hard. But I know that Haley was there. I think Reese was there and
Charles, maybe?
It was, I don't remember, Charles was there too.
I think it was just the two of us.
Just two of us. So we could certainly try to do a better job of providing that opportunity. My question is just My question is just, I mean, I know that we all think we're pretty cool, but I'm not sure. There's a lot of students lining up for this job, so I don't want to put barriers in place where
No, no.
we're discouraging kids from like, hey, now you get to meet over the summer, and you get to come to an extra board meeting, and we're gonna interview you, like, I, I agree, to Crystal's point, watching a video and getting a sense as to what it is, providing them an opportunity to talk to Aiden, Haley, and Marissa, who can give them sort of a real life sense as to what it's like would be much more beneficial than to start adding things to their calendar.
Yeah.
I feel like if I went to that meeting last year, I probably would have been a little bit more known what to expect. So I think, just like that meeting with the current board reps and next years and, you know, any board members and you, Dr. Love, I think that's enough, because again, you don't add too much to them. Like, I really wouldn't want to go to a meeting over the summer. So just like that meeting and conversation, I think, that's just, that's enough, and then maybe come to a board meeting in here at the end of the year, just to see how it operates.
I got a question that I asked last year's, uh, student representatives, and just be honest, is the time factor when we start anything of concern? Seven o'clock start, would it be better earlier, later? What do you think?
Seven o'clock's.
Seven o'clock is good?
It's a good time.
You think?
The only problem is athletics, but if you have a game, you're not gonna get home till eight thirty.
You're not gonna get it, yeah.
You're gonna miss it.
Sam, should we move it to eight thirty so that we can account for the game?
No, I don't think we want to start at eight thirty.
I was just wondering.
But I, I put it out. Just to be fair.
Sam tried to strong arm last year's student board reps into a six P M. start.
Charlie would have never made a meeting.
Yeah, Charlie, Charlie made it very clear that they did not want him sitting next to them right after his soccer game. He needed a buffer period of time before the meeting.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be nice though if, if, so to your point, Barbara, without having to have them come over the summer, if maybe they could give us a couple of bullets of things that they would like the board to address in, in our retreat over the summer as we plan our goals? Like, if you have an idea of what a goal should be. And then the only other thing that I would submit as an idea, uh, just for the succession piece of it, is perhaps we should consider having a junior or two on the board.
I was thinking about that.
As like a apprenticeship or a mentorship.
We, we talked about.
Haven't you had juniors before?
Somebody, no?
We have, we have had juniors before that have done two-year stints. It's very, it's very difficult to get a sixteen-year-old to sign up for a two-year commitment.
So maybe it's a one-year commitment with the hope of a second year. Yeah. What's nice about that though is that even if the junior doesn't do it the senior year, they're still here to help the person who steps into that role. These amazing people are gonna be in college, so, you know, just as a mentorship piece, but.
If there's one that's interested.
We try every year. Well, when we were.
We have to be cooler.
When we were asked at like the student government meeting, they asked the senior representatives first, they historically have always said, yes, we'll do it. If they said no, they would ask the juniors.
Oh.
And my junior, they asked me and I said no at the time, and then, but yeah, they asked the seniors first and they've always said yes, like, then it would go to the juniors, so there, there is that piece, but it's never gotten that far.
Are either of you in the IB program? Just because last year, several of the students were, but none of them used that in their CAS program, in their CAS presentation. As a service. I, I think it's a tremendous service, but they didn't, I guess they didn't see it that way. I don't know. They're all, have to figure out how to fix that. Anyway, thank you for your input.
You guys get community service hours for this or no?
I guess we could.
We could, it's true.
These aren't two that are looking for extra community service hours.
No, they probably don't.
Are either of you interested in continuing next year? We could zoom in from college, you know?
It's a little loud in your room. No. Okay. All right, a couple of things. I'd like all five of us on the board to start our board self-evaluation. So in, in, oh my gosh, I've just drawn a blank.
Have they been updated?
Super eval?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Been updated?
And Sasha has one. We can sit down and talk about it, but I, I'd like to get it started because I'd like to finish it like within two weeks so that I can use that information to figure out who to, who, what, what are areas that we were weak in? And give that information to the person who's gonna direct our retreat.
Okay.
Good.
So, you know, I'd like.
Sasha, I can show you.
You know? The superintendent is not gonna complete his evaluation until June. He's gotta get past the budget and.
Early June.
Stuff to finish. Once he does, he's gonna complete it like by June 19th. Is he rolling his eyes at me? Okay. Because I, I'd like to have, go over his evaluation with him at the June 26th meeting with an exec session. So I have to have it done the week before so I can collate it and get it formatted for him and then give you guys pieces to work on. Okay?
I mean, my plan is to have it done by the first meeting in June, so by the 12th. But then you guys will need time to do your piece, so that we bring it to the end of June.
Yep.
Okay. The other thing, speaking of the retreat, is when people are or are not available for the summer?
Just say it. I'm, I'm.
You're around, you can work.
I'm very flexible.
You can work your trips around whatever.
Yeah, well, you can pick a date and I'll work everything around that.
Crystal, do you have any clothes? No dates?
I, uh, have work commitment days, July 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th, and August 19th. And then I am not, uh, on the homeland. July 23rd to August 7th.
So July 23rd.
To August 7th.
To August 2nd or 7th?
7th.
7th.
I'll be away.
Okay, that's good to know.
I prefer Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays in case I take a long weekend.
Tuesday, Wednesday, and third, or Thursday?
Yeah, I can probably work around whichever, if we can do the retreat on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Okay.
I usually take, if I like take a day off, I take like a Monday or a Friday.
Okay.
And I prefer a three o'clock start or later. Sorry, Sam.
Yep.
If we do a late start.
If we do that, then I'm good to those dates that I gave.
Yeah, if we do a late start, it, it should be after four for me.
I agree.
Or, or in the morning.
That's, that's actually even better.
Yeah.
Four to seven, four to eight, whatever.
On the, the July dates that I gave you, Barbara, I can do, at the earliest, I can do four thirty, so, because I don't get out of work until four on those days.
The 7th to the 10th?
The 7th through the 10th, yeah.
Okay, four thirty.
Yeah, so I can do four thirty.
Okay, that's good.
The later the better for me, so.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I'll work with those. Uh, thank you. Okay, one more thing.
Two more things, I think.
We go, huh?
Two more things?
Two more days?
Two more things?
Two more things? Two more things? I only can remember one more thing. Do I have two more things to say?
Katie, or Mrs. Odell's class, right?
Um, I have.
Oh, Odell.
Nope, that's not it.
Katie Odell's, uh.
Yeah, um, Mrs. Odell, Mrs. Odell, um, sent us an email today. See if I can get it. Her, her class read and, read some information about accessible playgrounds. And they wrote in answer to this question, why should P V E S build an accessible playground? Give details from the text to support your answer.
I love it. It's so cute.
The, really, the writings were just so good. I just, just to give you a taste. Let me see. Where's Dominic? So Dominic writes, "P V E S should make an accessible playground for people that have disabilities because if they have a wheelchair, they can't go on the monkey bars, slide, or swings. The playground we have now can't be used by everyone. This is a problem because if a friend comes to our school who's in a wheelchair, they can't do anything but sit on the side and watch their friends. That would make a friend feel sad. We could, we could have ramps and musical instruments such as xylophones or musical trees. Everyone can have fun." Seiya writes, "P V E S should build an accessible playground because people in wheelchairs deserve to play. All kids should be able to have fun and feel like they belong. The playground that we have now is only good for people without disabilities. A new playground should have some musical instruments so kids with disabilities should be able to play with their friends. All kids deserve to be happy. Even though I'm not in a wheelchair, I can still show the golden rule. In conclusion, if we do this, we can be a role model for other schools." I have to tell you, her kids love exclamation points. It's very exciting.
Those sentiments are, are, are what it's all about. No child, no child should ever feel diminished or left out. I have believed that since day one, and if we do anything as a board, we support that concept. Every child needs to be proud of him or herself, who they are and what they can do, and should never be excluded from anything. Boy, I, that, that's, and those kids summed it up so powerful.
One more.
I was so moved by those comments.
Brayla writes, "P V E S should build an accessible playground because we want all kids to feel welcome. First of all, the playground should be used by everyone, including kids with disabilities. At recess, when kids with disabilities can't play, they wouldn't, they would be left alone and they would be sad, and we don't want that." Next, when kids with disabilities attend P V E S, they should go out to recess and think to themselves, why am I just sitting here and why can't I play? Some kids spend their allowances to help pay for the playground at some schools. In conclusion, capital letters, the playground is a place that will let kids know that they belong." Exclamation point. So yes, now, the accessible playground is part of the bond proposal.
Yes.
So we're not asking kids to bring in their allowances to help pay for it, but we are asking the community to make a playground that's accessible to all, so.
So in doing some research on school attendance, I have found that one of the most prevalent reasons why students do not come to school is because they do not feel that they belong. It's really important that all of our kids feel that they belong in their school, that they have a place, that they can feel like they're at home because they're actually awake longer in school than they are anywhere else. And yeah, I agree with you, Sam. There's one thing we need to do, it's that.
Yeah, yeah, that's always my focus anyway.
Okay, so thank Mrs. Odell's class. Um, all of the letters were amazing, you know?
And very well-written. I love those transitional words.
Written for, these are second graders.
Yes.
Writing better than I do.
Their, their, their writing like third graders should write, so they're already a year ahead. That's fantastic.
Very nicely done.
It was about four or five years ago that Mrs. Odell's class originally wrote us about the playground, so it's nice to see that this was included on the bond.
Yes.
And that the kids still have interest in it, and it'd be great to see the, you know, what happens with the bond vote, but let's see those kids celebrate.
I'm curious about the musical instruments on the playground, but I'll wait and see.
Like a xylophone.
The xylophone, right?
Like a sideways xylophone.
Yeah.
We're gonna give them a little.
And there's like.
I've seen one of those, yeah, right, right.
Anything, give me an instrument.
Thank you.
Other board, is that all? Did I have anything else? You said I had one more? One more thing I forgot to talk about. No, that's it.
The letter?
Hmm?
The letter to the town board collaboration.
Oh, yeah, the letter to the town board? We have a couple of options. I know, Sam, that you don't feel that that's our place.
I think the letter to the town board is, is a wise move for, um, agreed initiatives, cooperation, partnership. But to specify a set topic that they should provide information on, I don't, I, I, I really do not think that is our place for that.
But it, the information that, for the public that's watching, the information that we asked the town to publicize for us was just the vote, the day of the vote, where it is, when it is. We didn't ask them to support or not support the bond, the budget, the, we just, and this is a, a town thing. This is the, probably the biggest thing that the town does, is support the school. It's definitely a huge part of people's taxes. It seems to me that just to send out information to remind people to vote, or when the vote is, is not asking too much of our town officials. I, I.
It's never been done.
Barbara, it's never been done. But that doesn't mean that we can't be done.
But I've been involved in, in town government and school for over thirty years. They are two separate domains. The town never comments on the school's budget and the school never comments on the town's budget.
Can I ask you a question? Are we okay with that? Like, I can't even.
Yeah, I'm okay with that because they're two separate entities. It's like church and state. You don't mix them.
But it's not.
It is, it is separate.
It's all state.
The town stands alone, school stands alone.
I just want to point out that we may be the only town where that dynamic exists. I have colleagues that meet with their town supervisor where they support each other, where they, they, they're in this together, right? The school district is, the, the school district vote is the most consequential decision that town residents face every single year. They don't vote on the town budget, so I can't have them support the town budget because there is no vote on the town budget. But we're asking the town to inform its constituents of something that will directly impact not just their tax bill, but their home values. And I can't fathom why we would accept this notion that the school shouldn't support the town and the town shouldn't support the school. That sounds insane to me.
No, no.
I think we should go out of our way to support each other in any way possible, is the way it works in every other town.
You're dealing with a budgetary issue. When I was supervisor, Dr. Wills would come before the board and talk about the budget at that time. It was her domain, the superintendent's domain, as supervisor, that was no problem. The school represented the school's.
Well, since then, we've been uninvited to the meetings, but can I ask a question? Is it the school's job to disseminate information on behalf of the town?
I was about to say, I get a flyer every week.
Hundreds of communications out every year on behalf of the town through Parks and Rec, through other town initiatives, through buyback programs, drug giveback programs, ceremonies, other events that are going on.
And that, that is exactly, uh, where the partnership, cooperation, and joint efforts should, should be.
So it should just be one way? We should advertise their things and they should advertise theirs.
Because the town, again, I, I referenced when I was supervisor, four years ago, we, we would do that. We would pop, you know, my God, you know, I, I love the school, so I would always talk about it. And the activities coming up, the choruses, the plays, that always happened. Plus, we, we designated, or the school designated a representative to come before the board meetings. And we don't do that anymore, and I don't know why that is. We should have a representative there every monthly meeting at a town board meeting.
I think there are a lot of ways that our town and our schools could collaborate better. And I think that maybe the history of them not is a part of the issue in our community where people see supporting the school district as something very challenging to conceive. I, I, I don't, first of all, I'm not a fan of hearing, "It's never been done." I'm literally the person that will shatter every barrier just because it hasn't been done, Sam, you know that, but, you know, if it hasn't been done and, and we're not doing it just for the sake of it hasn't been done, I think we need to really reconsider that. And, and this is my point as a, as a parent. The programs that the town offers would not survive without us sending out those flyers for information because that's how they get into the hands of our families, is through the school.
And that's great.
All we're asking, but that is a very one-sided deal to a communication process that is supposed to be a bipartisan partnership. All we're doing is asking the town to remind people to vote. That's it. It's like putting the sign up. That's literally it. We're not telling them how to vote, we're not telling them what to say, we're not telling them what to think or what to believe. We're just saying, can you please help us to the point of the citizens that live in this community that said that they were uninformed about the vote in January? Can you please assist us in using your resources the way that we use ours to publicize what you've asked us to publicize? To please publicize the fact that the vote is happening where it is and what time?
So what would you expect the town to do?
May 20th, six to nine, at the elementary school. Don't forget to vote. The vote is happening.
And along with that, Sam, when we had parents come up and talk about communication regarding the vote, they even mentioned. When we had parents come up and talk about communication regarding the vote, they even mentioned to utilize the town. So the town has a specific email address where they send out information. That has probably a lot of people that aren't involved in the school district. It's another way to communicate to the town.
Outside of parish, right.
That and that.
Because we.
The town crosses approximately four school districts, so it would be difficult to, to pull just the Putnam Valley school district within that. And maybe they can do that.
But the volume is very small.
I don't know.
Do the other districts also vote on May twentieth?
Yeah.
Why not just vote on May twentieth? We're not saying vote, yes, or vote.
May twentieth in your designated area.
Correct.
Q R code to figure out where that is.
The letter that I read seemed to me to want the board, the town board, to, to support. I mean, that, that was the tenor of that.
The original, the original one, but we changed that because we said we really. We really don't, I don't want to put them in that position. I don't want to put them in the position of support or not support. Because the town could, the town board could be, personally, they could, some people could be in support of the school budget. Some people could be against it.
Exactly.
And, and I don't want to put that division on the town board. But I would like them to be, to just publicize the vote. That's all.
Then state that.
We can rewrite the letter.
That's what it's in.
State that in the letter.
We can revise the letter.
That intent was not there. It seemed that, my read was, you support the budget. They're not going to do that. This is, this, that's a, it's a political issue, and they have major elections come November.
I get it. Anybody who would support our, or, or choose a side is attempting political suicide. I understand. But to utilize their communication systems, I think is a fair.
Just to, just to state the board vote.
What we have is, hold on, assist in the communication, the annual school budget and the bond vote as well.
Assist in the communication. That's what it says in the letter. That's all we're asking them to do. And, and hopefully, begin the conversation of maybe them sending a rep from the town board to the school board meetings and us deciding to send somebody, whether we take turns or what, to go to the town board meetings. We have to make that commitment, but the commitment has to work both ways. And I, and this is the beginning of an outreach that hopefully will build a stronger bond between the town board and the school board.
And I agree with that, and I stated that in my response, my email response to the entire board, that, that should be our goal. Cooperation, partnership, and joint initiatives. I'm in favor of that one hundred percent. The budget, the way I read that letter seemed, you know, support the budget. I, I was very uncomfortable with that.
And, and I was too, and we adapted the letter to reflect that. So maybe what we'll do is we'll send it out again. If you still are against the way the.
Send, send it out again with just that emphasis on, could you please promote the date and the time of the budget vote?
Right, and we can, if, if you don't, still don't feel comfortable.
That I would feel comfortable with.
I would want a majority of the board to sign the letter. If the, the entire, we don't have to agree on everything. And if you don't feel comfortable with the letter, I'm, I'm okay with you not signing it. Because that's, you know, that, that's your personal belief, and that's fine.
And in my email, I said, I would not fix my name to that current letter, but revise it, and yeah, let's take a look at it.
Okay.
I will say this too, just having, having Sam be a part of the conversation is really very helpful, because there's a side of this that you know that we don't, and, or that I certainly don't, and so I get educated every time I sit next to you. But, you know, I think that we also have to continue to push towards a vision of unity in this community.
I agree with that.
And that's gonna, it might have to be crawling to that finish line, you know, one day, but we need to crawl one foot at a time. And I think, I think that a good first step is, hey, can you just remind everybody that the budget vote is happening?
There you go.
Let's start there.
There you go.
Nice and slow.
But Park and Rec's, our, the town's Park and Rec's department is tied so tightly with the school. They utilize the school resources. You know, there's, there's gift back and forth. The, the school utilizes the town's fields. I mean, that type of thing needs to expand.
Yes.
And even grow larger. I mean, there is cooperation.
Agreed.
The budget has always been psychosick. I, I, I mean, you know, because some of the town will approve it and some of the town won't. And an individual who runs for a political position, the first question's going to be, the school is not your concern. Talk about town issues. We don't want to hear it. And it, it becomes like you said.
Which again, that rhetoric to Dr. Luft's point, though, Sam, is crazy.
About what?
The fact that school is not your concern as a town supervisor.
No, school is the concern. It's whether you support the budget or not, because those are the controversial issues within the community.
I just want to find, I'm looking at a letter I sent to the community, encouraging community members to go out and vote in the general election and the town camp proposal.
And what?
The town camp proposal.
Ah, okay, good.
So that's my communication to our entire distribution group, supporting a town initiative and a town vote related to that. And I'm sure if I go back and look, I have one for the rec center too. So this nonsense of we've never done it, or we don't support them, they don't support us.
It's under your watch.
It defies logic.
It does.
Why the town wouldn't support the school and the school wouldn't support the town. I'm not asking individuals to take personal stances how they feel. I get that's their opinion. I'm not asking them to support it if they don't support it.
Yeah.
But to refuse to share information, because someone may attribute that to passive support of a school budget, as if that was the worst thing that could possibly happen in this town, it just seems insane to me.
It is the.
And I know for a fact, that is not the way that relationship goes in other towns, where town supervisors and superintendents of schools support each other hand in hand, day over day.
It depends on who holds office, Dr. Luft, and that's a fact. Because I've seen very pro-school individuals in the supervisory office, and I've seen very anti-school people in the supervisory office in my lifetime.
How can you be anti-school for a town? How can you be anti-school in, for a town?
No, not anti-school. They won't take a position on the school budget.
And it's, but it's not about that, and I think that's the clarity that has to happen. There needs to be clarity around the sharing of information. In my personal opinion, it is the duty of the town to inform its citizens that there is a vote that they should be going to vote on on May twentieth.
And that's fine.
And if they didn't do that, they would not be doing their job informing citizens. And maybe that's a part of our problem, is the fact that our entities are not collaborating and communication, and that's the reason why people aren't knowing that there's a vote happening. So that's number one. Number two, I, I, I wanted specific examples of how the town and the district have collaborated in communication in the past. And that is a perfect example, Dr. Luft, is the fact that we, you know, went out and sent that letter, and we sent the letter before that. And we send, the only one that I could think of at the time, because I don't have that much historical knowledge of the collaboration, is just the flyers that we send constantly through the elementary schools. The, you know, the collaboration that happens through the, the children's program in the morning, you know. Those types of collaborations should continue to be nurtured, but when it comes to sharing information, we are the way. It's the school district and the town. That is the way Putnam Valley citizens get their information. We're not New York City. We're not Channel Two.
And I have no problem with that.
We, we have to just work together in that communication.
As I said, we'll sign a letter that asks them to share the basic information about the upcoming vote.
The upcoming vote, that's all.
And that's it.
So we'll send out the revised letter, and everybody can either respond, and then when we get everybody's responses, we will sign those signatures to the thing.
Thank you. I sent it out, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, any other board comments, concerns, questions? Okay, then I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.